Annual meeting on December 2nd, 2024. I am Lolita E. Walker, Chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Our current board members are present in their elected roles. The law states Maryland Education Code annotated Section 3-1002-G1, "An elected member serves for a term of four years beginning on the first Monday in December after the member's election and until the member's successor is elected and qualifies." We thank you each for coming and serving tonight. New members were unable to be sworn in as of today as the Maryland State Board of Elections was unable to release the commissions in time for today's scheduled oath of office ceremony. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct the annual meeting according to Maryland Education Code annotated Section 3-1002, Section 3-1004, and Section 4-107. The Prince George's County Board of Education shall elect a chair and vice chair, Maryland Education Code annotated 3-1004, at the annual meeting, which shall be held on the first Monday in December, Maryland Education Code annotated Section 4-107A4. The Chair reminds everyone to ensure that their wireless devices are turned off. A call-in line has been established for the community to hear the meeting interpreted live in Spanish. The number to call is (508) 924-5155. Again, that number is (508) 924-5155. Please focus your attention on the screen to hear the announcement in Spanish. Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al (508) 924-5155. Thank you so much. Thanks for the new video. For those who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPAS YouTube channel for later viewing. Lastly, for reporting purposes, the Chair reminds all board members to please turn on their microphones when speaking. Before beginning the meeting, the Chair will introduce Mrs. Daisy W. Matthews, professional registered parliamentarian, who will serve in the capacity of parliamentarian in lieu of our board parliamentarian, Mr. Swift, who is unable to attend tonight. Welcome, Ms. Daisy. Ms. Johnson, please call to roll. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Mrs. Frazier? Dr. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Jongo? Dr. Miller? And Ms. Walker?
Present.
We have six in affirmative. We have quorum.
A quorum is present.
Board Member Briggs, please lead us in the board prayer.
Please bow your heads. "O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steers to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen."
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. There are no registered public commenters tonight. Hello, Mr. Jongo. The Chair will continue to facilitate the meeting following the pre-prepared script unless there are any known issues as related to the purpose of today's meeting. Ms. Adam Stafford?
Yes, I'd like to move that we table today's election until our new board members have been sworn in.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'd like to motion that we table today's election until our new board members have been sworn in.
Oh, thank you so much. We're going to follow the law tonight, and what the law says is that we will have this meeting. However, there is a motion on the floor, and so we'll take that motion to proceed. Can we, the motion is to...
Second.
Did you want to hear the motion again, or you want to...
I heard it.
Okay, that sounds great. So there's a, we don't need a second for a small body, okay? But thank you so much. Mr. Farrar, is there any legal ramifications to doing this? If not, we'll move forward.
I will defer to the parliamentarian as to that motion, if it's in order, if it's not, or not in order.
Ms. Parliamentarian, the question is, is the motion in order or not? It is not in order. Can you help the audience to understand why?
The motion is not...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can. Thank you. Come on up.
The motion is not in order because there's no reason to table.
Oh, thank you.
So the motion is not in order because there is no real reason to table. We table things. We lay things on the table when there is an emergency. Now, if we want, if the superintendent comes in and he has a presentation or something, then yes, we can just table it temporarily until the superintendent or someone else of importance finish what they're doing, and then we go back to the motion. So there's no reason to table, and so at this time, the motion is out of order.
So are we going to have an opportunity to discuss?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
There is another light on. It's not coming up as the right person. Go ahead, please.
Just a clarifying question for the parliamentarian. I just want to understand better, what does emergency mean? Because I think that it's an emergency that we don't have the candidates that have worn, sworn in yet. So what constitutes an emergency? What's the definition of an emergency? Because that's kind of ambiguous.
I sort of explained it. If we had a guest to come in or there was some other reason there to, that needed to interrupt the vote or the taking, doing of whatever was going on of the motion, then yes.
I guess what I'm asking is like, is there a clear definition on emergency, or can it be applied to different situations?
Let me just look up and robust, just to make certain of if there is a clear definition. But from what my training has taught me is that there is, in the event that someone enters in, tabling, as people usually do tabling, say table, let's just table some for the sake of tabling it, that is an improper use of lay, the motion to lay on the table. So the actual way it's done is that, as I stated, if there is an emergency, if there's a real reason why we need to postpone this temporarily, just temporarily, until whatever action is completed, then we go back to that action. In this case, the motion was just basically to table, and I don't understand, I didn't hear why she wanted to table it. You have a quorum, you have a quorum, present. So because there's a quorum, then is there a real reason to table it?
Thank you. Let me get the meeting back in order. Thank you so much. I do appreciate that.
I wanted to amend my motion.
One second, please, and thank you. What we'll do, thank you, Board Member Jackson. We'll get back to you on a second round if that's something that you're interested in. No problem at all. We'll go back to Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you. I wanted to amend my motion. I wanted to postpone the voting of the officers for the board until we have the new board members sworn in.
And until the new, until the new officers are sworn in, of which we don't have a date on that as of yet. So my response would be, and then you can help me with any parliamentarian or legal ramifications to this, is that we have a law that tells us what we need to do. We can vote accordingly, and the vote might not go through. But I think that there's a request today to, it sounds like, to postpone until an indefinite date, until the new board members are sworn in so that they can vote. Yeah, I'm not willing to break the law for this. I think we, she said the question, she said that answer is up to you as the Chair. Did you want, you can say it into the microphone so they can hear you say it, please.
So the choice is up to the Chair? The Assembly will vote, the members will vote. But if there is a motion on the floor, then you have to vote on it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrar. Did you have anything additional?
No, other than the motion was made, is there, I think there needs to be a second.
There doesn't need to be a second with a small body of 10 members, 10 total members. So there is a motion on the floor. Is, the motion on the floor is that the vote be postponed until the new members are sworn in. That's an indefinite date. We don't know the date to that as of yet. And so, Ms., we, let's have discussion. We'll open it up.
So let me do, tell the board. So if there's no session, so we're in a session of the annual meeting, and we haven't set a definitive time, then this meeting is concluded and adjourned. If that's the board's pleasure.
I want the board members to understand that. Can you say that one more time, please, so that they properly understand?
So if you've set another, if you've set and extend the voting to another time that is indefinite, then this session, this annual meeting, is concluded.
I think everybody's clear. Was there any questions on what Mr. Farrar has just said? Okay, thank you. Got it. Is there any additional discussion? I do have two lights here, so we will go to, that would be a third round, so let me see if there's any additional ones that have not talked already. Mr. Briggs?
So this is our chance to explain why we are supporting or against the motion, correct?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Okay, so I just want to say that I think it's really important that, one, we give, you know, our currently elected members an opportunity to be represented by the people who elected them. I know that this is one of the most consequential and important votes that they'll take, because this will be the people that represent them in leadership for the next two years. It's really important that their voices aren't disenfranchised, and they don't have an opportunity to participate in this process. I think also the law states that we have to do the swearing-in today, as well as the leadership. I guess there's questions about intent. Assuming that the people who created the law had the intent that the people who would be voting would be the new members, then we have this process that's going against the law right now, and we're also going to be doing something that essentially would follow that process. The last thing I want to say is that I think that there's precedent. The last time that we voted, in 2022, we didn't have it during the actual swearing-in. So if you remember, when we were sworn in, we came, we did the process, and then that Thursday, we had the leadership. So it just doesn't seem to be that. If we could do that differently last time, we can't do it differently this time.
Thank you so much. Does that conclude your comment? Thank you. Mr. Jongo?
Oh, mine was, okay, good evening. My question is more for the legal counsel. So I think you kind of answered it, but if we technically, well, I guess you kind of said it. If we technically say that we're going to move the voting to another day, like we move it to Thursday's meeting, we technically didn't break the law because we still had the meeting today, correct? Or are we breaking the law if we just don't vote at all?
So the motion was to move it till after the new members are sworn in. It wasn't necessarily to Thursday's meeting, which would be a definite time that could extend the, that could extend the annual meeting. So, and again, you know, I would defer to the parliamentarian, but, you know, what you could do is adjourn and fix the time for the meeting, but it has to be before the next meeting, sometime before the next meeting, which would extend the session. So then the annual meeting wouldn't necessarily conclude. It would just, it would go into another session. So if it doesn't conclude and you go into another session, then you would be in conformance with the law.
Okay, and then also, just so like, again, I just want to make sure. Like, the law, the exact law, like, if we could read, like, I don't know if somebody could pull it up because I don't have my computer on me, but does the law, like, clearly state that we have to vote for the board leadership on the 2nd of December?
Let me repeat the law, okay? No problem. Let me just repeat the law. The first law states that Maryland Education Code annotated Section 3-1002-G1, "An elected member serves for a term of four years beginning on the first Monday in December after the member's election and until that member's successor is elected and qualifies." The second, as to the annual meeting of which you just asked, is the purpose of today's meeting is to conduct the annual meeting according to Maryland Education Code annotated Section 3-1002, 3-1004, and 4-107, says, "The Prince George's County Board of Education shall elect a chair and vice chair, Maryland Education Code annotated Section 3-1004, at the annual meeting, which shall be held on the first Monday in December, Maryland Education Code annotated Section 4-107A4." As we, did that answer your question, Mr. Jongo?
Yeah.
Okay, so as we continue forward, let me just pause. Go ahead.
Okay, and then, all right, again, so if the new board members or the board member elects aren't sworn in, are we even allowed to do anything under board business until they're, you know, sworn in?
Excellent question.
Because of the fact that, like, it would be their term technically. Like, if we go to Thursday and they're still not sworn in, technically it's their term, right? So any, the board members, you know, the previous board members in their seats right now, if they vote on something, is it technically voting? Do we really have quorum unless they're sworn in, or is that not? I don't know. I just want to make sure.
No problem. I understand your question. So for clarity, the members that were, they're not elected and qualified, okay? That's it. So what the law has said, that I just said, that I'll say again, is that the members who are currently board members, which are the ones that seated around you today, why are they here? It's because that we don't have candidates who are elected and qualified as of this time. And I've read, I'm sorry, you weren't here, so let me say this. "New members were unable to be sworn in as of today as the Maryland State Board of Elections was unable to release the commissions in time for today's scheduled oath of office ceremony." So that's the part you missed before you were here. So that, they're not elected and qualified. Therefore, they're not members of our Board of Education. They will be soon, however, they're not as of today, okay? They're not. And so what that means is that we have members of our Board of Education that are sitting around today, and that is what the law states, that they will, as I mentioned before, until the member's successor is elected and qualifies. This is following the law. That's it. It just is. It's not Lolita, it's not any of that. It is, this is the law, okay? We have a third round. Are we voting on a third round? Let's have the discussion. Yes, Ms. Adam Stafford?
Thank you.
No problem.
So what we have here is a situation where we're really taking advantage of the fact that the Board of Elections still is counting ballots, and we're unnecessarily sowing seeds of division with, by not allowing our new members the opportunity to vote for their own leadership. Just consider Congress. Let's take, take it back to civics. Let's consider Congress. If Congress allowed the outgoing party to choose the leadership of the newly elected members, there would be all types of chaos, and that's because the intent of this law, and I'm very, you know, passionate about this because board members lobbied so hard to have the opportunity to vote for our own leadership, because we all represent tens of thousands of people. And so, you know, it's really unfortunate. Our country prides itself on the peaceful transfer of power, and really, this is truly a repugnant power grab that spits in the face of democratic processes. We have people that have been elected. They should have the opportunity to vote for the chair and vice chair, to bring forward the initiatives and the ideas and the desires of their communities that have sent them here. And so, you know, I'm just truly disappointed tonight. I thought we had turned a corner as a board, that we would be able to, you know, consider how to have continuity without, just, you know, without just this, quite frankly, just this nonsense. But unfortunately, this is where we are. And so, you know, I will be voting to postpone this, to allow our new members an opportunity to vote for their leadership. I hope my other colleagues will as well. And just recognizing that, you know, our communities are watching, and this is just an unnecessary, an unnecessary seed of division that we're sowing with the new board members. And you can look at any other elected body in our country, and it does not operate like this. And so, you know, I would implore my colleagues to consider, you know, handling this with grace and handling it with some care and respect for the new people that are coming in.
Thank you so much. What is unfortunate is that we leverage this platform in front of our 133,000 scholars and 22,000 employees to have a sight of division that is totally unnecessary. We have members who are sitting around this table who are fulfilling the law in their respective roles, period. It is not that they want it to be here, it is that they are by duty elected to be here tonight. And unfortunately, the words that we continue to spew is that we have elected members who are not able to vote, and that is simply not true. I have read the law at this point three times. What the law specifically states is that we have board members who were elected inside of their seats to do a job, and until these new members, who are going to be amazing members, are sitting inside of these seats, you are not yet elected and qualified. That is not an issue with the Board of Education at all. However, what some of my colleagues want to allow our public to think is that this is a power grab. I will say to the contrary, to the contrary. The power grab is in, we have past experience in July that tells us that should we decide to fix a time, which our council told us today, then we would be finished and we would be done tonight. But instead, colleagues have leveraged this opportunity, unfortunately, to be able to discuss something that is simply, factually, not true. We need our constituents to be educated, to be able to advocate, and to be able to act in the spirit of the law. And I have read the law today, and so I will go to the other members, and we will continue to have our two and a half minutes. We are following the law, contrary to what anyone wants to believe or what anyone wants to spew. This is the elected body that is here until we have elected and qualified people in place. That could be Thursday, that could be after such time. Until then, we will continue to do the work of the Board of Education, of which there is a lot of work to do. And here we sit to have this power grab, love the word, but I want folks to recognize where is the power that is being grabbed. Let's move on. I think it was, you're next? Perfect. Thank you so much.
So my question is for, is for Brad. So if, about this extension piece that we talked about. So if we were to extend the meeting to Thursday, and let's just say, hopefully, everybody is certified by tomorrow, and let's just say that it doesn't happen, then let's say, okay, so we would extend the meeting till Thursday, and we could take the vote and still not be in violation of the law because we would just extend this annual meeting till Thursday, but let's just say that they don't get certified by Thursday, and they get certified Friday. Could we make a motion on Thursday to extend the meeting even further?
So the answer, there's, there's two parts to your question. One part I'm going to defer to the parliamentarian because there's, there's an issue as it relates to your regular meeting that you would have on Thursday. So if you adjourned, you moved to adjourn and you fixed the time to Thursday, it would be effectively another session of this meeting. So you would still be within the legal confines of, of whatever you did during the annual meeting. And then hopefully, the new members would be sworn in before then, before that meeting.
Okay, so before you go to the second part, so what you're saying is that if we were to extend this session until Thursday, we would still be in the legal ramifications that's guided by Maryland Code. And then the parliamentarian, she already said that it would be up to the Chair's discretion in order to...
But if I can stop you right there, because there's an, it's not the Chair's discretion. There's an issue as to having another regular meeting prior to when you would have a subsequent meeting of this annual meeting.
But can those meetings happen on the same day, though? It only got 29 seconds. So, so can we have a meeting, both meetings on the same day? Both meetings can happen on Thursday. We can continue this meeting and then finish the annual meeting on Thursday. So I would like to make a motion to put a definitive time to Thursday on, on Shaler's motion.
Right, so...
It's to fix the time to which to adjourn to Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM to continue the procedure of electing the chair and vice chair. That's what it is.
Thank you.
Perfect. We're all in alignment. The question is, well, we had a motion on the table. Would you like to remove your motion or continue with your motion, Ms. Adam Stafford? Okay. It wasn't a substitute motion. I was telling him what the, the option was for voting. It's not a motion, you don't need a motion for it. It is just the option and then the question, which we would have gotten to had we not had that. So we can, you can make it as a motion, it would have come up anyway, but the question is, shall we adopt fixing the time to which to adjourn to Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM before the regularly scheduled meeting to continue the procedure of electing a chair for the Prince George's County Board of Education?
Members haven't been sworn in at that time, then we find ourselves back in the situation, don't we?
Would you like to have, you would like to decline that motion?
I...
You need to fix, what would you like to say?
We can go ahead, we'll go with it, that's fine.
It's totally up to you.
It's fine.
She says she'll go with it. This, the fixing to the...
Fix the time to the future.
Uh-huh, to the fifth.
Until...
5:00 on Thursday. Okay, is everybody clear? The question is, shall we adopt fixing the time to which to adjourn to Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM before the regularly scheduled meeting to continue the procedure of electing a chair for, a chair and vice chair for the Prince George's County Board of Election, I mean, Education, Lord? Are there any discussion? There were lights on, but is there any additional discussion? We can start over. Board Member Adam Stafford, did you have anything additional? Okay.
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Farrar. So I just want to be clear. So I know that you said that the session is going to go... So if it's indefinite, then that means that the meeting ends. If it's, if it's a date, then that means that it is until, the session is open until that time. If we gave a, let's say if we gave until next Thursday, whatever day that is, December, whatever, could, could we still technically have, could we still technically vote in session before then? Let's say that if we went until next Thursday, but tomorrow, the elected officials are certified, and we decided to vote on Thursday. The session's open until whatever time is the, the end date, right?
So the session, so this is one session. You voted to fix the time to next, I mean, to Thursday at 5:00. That would be another session of the same meeting. So it'd be the second session. And once that's concluded, you would adjourn the, the annual meeting. Right, so I think your question is, if they aren't certified, and their commissions aren't in, and the oaths of office have not been administered, can you then also fix, can you adjourn and fix the time for another session of the annual meeting? Is that your question?
Well, my question is, if we set the date for December 12th, and let's say tomorrow they're certified, and we wanted to add to the agenda that we would vote on this Thursday, that would, that would, we could have the session then, and that would end it, right?
So, so that's a technical question I'm going to, to ask Ms. Matthews to answer. Knowing that there is a regular meeting that occurs on the 5th, and I, I think that the requirement is that you have to have it prior to, to having a regular meeting.
That is correct, that is, that is correct. You have to have the, the next session of this meeting, the extension of this meeting session prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Thursday. So anytime between tonight and 5:30 on Thursday, you're free to have, to schedule a session. you're free to have, to schedule a session.
Did you have anything additional? Go ahead.
Well, this is really more for my colleagues, but, but it's not for Mr. Farrar. I mean, you answered the question, thank you. Um, I, I just want to say for my colleagues, you know, I think back to December 2022, and I think back to when I was elected, when, uh, Chair Walker was elected, um, Board Member Jackson and others. And the idea that that same night, um, people were bold enough to put their names in the, in the hat for leadership. And I believe that was Chair Walker, who, same night, that, pretty much same week that she was sworn in, she put her head in. I just want to keep that in mind, I want colleagues to keep that in mind, that when we're taking that vote away, we're also taking away the opportunity for people to say, I want to be the leadership. And I don't think that's a fair opportunity to allow people not to have that opportunity to say that, because we wouldn't have our chair right now if she didn't have that opportunity extended to her. And I think that, and I also know that in the context of what the law says, we were in violation. It's very clear now. I think we all can think back to the fact that we weren't following the law then. Um, and so I just want to push for us to think outside the box, because I think that that would help to bridge the relationship and all the, the great things that we want to do as a board as we're moving forward. Um, and I think that would start us off right if we did that.
Thank you so much for that comment. Um, I, we were not outside of the law. Um, we can go back and take a look at all of the things to which you are referring, that, that's not factual, um, based on my recollection. What I will tell you today is that I've read the law as it states. Uh, we had Mr. Farrar and a parliamentarian let us know that we absolutely can fix the time to which to adjourn, still meet the law by 5:00, and we have the opportunity to do that. So the things that we continue to talk about and the allegations that we're making out loud to the public without citing anything, um, by way of law or by way of parliamentarian procedure, really is unfortunate that, that, you know, that's what being, that's what's being chosen to do tonight. Um, what is on the option right now is to fix the time to which to adjourn on Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM and continue the procedure, which is a continuation of this session, of electing a vice chair and a chair for the Prince George's County Board of Education. That's what's on the table today. That's what we're allowed to do by law. That is the extension of tonight. Um, in hopes that we will have certified, um, let me just say, that we will have elected and, um, qualified candidates who absolutely will have the opportunity to vote on a chair and a vice chair.
I just have a point of information for the parliamentarian. Are qualified and, and certified synonymous? It's, it's not clear what qualified means, because in, in my opinion, they're qualified because they won their election with thousands and thousands of votes. They're qualified by the people who sent them here. So just, can you provide some clarity on what qualified means? Or, Mr. Farrar, can you provide some clarity on qualified versus certified? I just want that, that for my own understanding.
That is not a parliamentarian question.
Yes, Mr. Farrar, please.
Well, I, I think, um, you know, and we've discussed, and I, I know you were copied on a, on a letter that, that, um, that I sent out on yesterday morning. Um, but one of the, the issue is, the, the process is that the board, or the State Board of Elections, that they certify the election results, they provide a commission, um, and a certification of those election results. And at this point, unfortunately, that just hasn't happened, because as you know, the number provisional ballots, um, has, has kind of slowed things up. I, I think this is just, um, i- it's unfortunate, um, and it's just been a long, it's been a long process for the Board of, uh, Elections, and unfortunately, these, these, the, the, the new board members have, have suffered because of it. But I, I think if we can provide them some grace, some opportunity to, to report the election results, Thursday may be enough time to, to get that done.
So in your view, qualified and certified are synonymous in this context?
I, I, no, I'm not, I, I can't say that qualified and certified are synonymous in this context.
No.
What I can say is that we have not gotten the election, the certified election results from the Board of Education, or the Board of Elections, I apologize.
And the law says that they have to be qualified, so there is possibility they could be qualified and not certified? Yes?
Yeah, I can't, I can't opine on that.
We, there's a law, where's the law, um, that talks about the, um, certification? What a, I think there's a law, uh, that was in an email that talks about the certification, uh, or the qualification of the, um, new candidates.
So part, part of the process is they receive a commission.
Yes.
And so...
But it says it.
Yes, yes. And so once that's, that's a part of the process that comes, once the, the votes are, again, the voting is all done, the Board of Election announces who's won. And so, you know, at this point, listen, we know what the process is. We just have to let the process play out and just trust the process. I think that the board has, uh, in front of it, and, uh, a solution. Um, and I think at this point, the board just needs to decide if it's going to accept the solution or not.
Absolutely. The goal here, and as stated at the intention of this meeting and the law, the, the goal of this meeting is not to, um, alienate those who have not been elected and qualified. The goal is to follow the law as the law is currently stated. And the law that's currently stated is what we are following today. The process by which is qualified, certified, sworn in, um, there is this annotated code that hopefully we're able to find it. It was in, um, I think it was your email, Mr., um, um, Fitzpatrick. Um, however, we have an option, and this option continues to be to extend this session. And in order to extend this meeting that we have here, to have a second session, which did happen in July, is that we will fix the time to which to adjourn to Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM, and then continue this procedure whereby the hope is that we have elected and qualified, um, persons that are sitting on this side of the table. And we have an opportunity to do that by voting on this option that is available to us legally right now. If there's no additional questions, we will have this vote. Mr. Janga, you had a question? Excellent. Let's proceed. Is there, are there any additional questions? If we can please call the roll. Thank you so much. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Frazier?
Aye.
Dr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Janga?
Aye.
Dr. Miller? Ms. Walker? Aye. Thank you so much. The motion to fix the time to, um, to fix the time to which to adjourn to Thursday, December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM to continue the procedure of electing a vice chair for the Prince, and chair for the Prince George's County Board of Education is, um, is adopted. Thank you so much. Um, we're almost adjourned. Hold on, hold on. Oh, Lord. Um, before we do adjourn, um, want to acknowledge the candidates that are in the audience. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Want to acknowledge the, um, board members who, um, have followed the law and have been here tonight. Appreciate your service, your continued service. Um, there being no further business, the time is now, 6:18 PM, um, on December 2nd, 2024, the Prince George's County Board of Education, um, annual meeting is adjourned. For those of you who have joined us in person, thank you for making the trip, and our online viewers, thank you so much, um, for watching. Good night. If you can please stop the recording. Thank you so much.